All right, I do have thumbs up. I'd like to welcome everyone. This is our regular meeting of September the 5th. It's the first meeting in September for us. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll follow that with invocation by Alderman Carver and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Carver, if you would please?
That's right. Father, we just come before you tonight and we thank you for the opportunity to be here, Lord. We thank you for the individuals on this side of the table, and we thank for the individuals on the other side of the table and the families represented. Lord, put a hedge protection around our city employees. Lord, we just thank you for all that you do for us and do for us as a city, Lord. Let us lean closer to you each and every day, in your name and pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Our first order of business will be approval of the official agenda with consented items. Do we have any changes? Alderman Carver, any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Sistrunk?
No, ma'am.
Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right. If not, then I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items.
So moved.
Motion from Alderman Rupp. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard a second from Alderman Vaughn, I believe. If you would, please. No, we're not doing that. All was favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. We were about to go roll the call in there. Sorry about that. All right, and I will read the consented items. First, we have consideration of the minutes of the August 11th, 2023 work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the August 15th, 2023 recess meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Under mayor's business, we have consideration to advertise for applicants to the five-member municipal election commission. Under department business, airport, we have request approval to extend the license agreement with the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Office of Atmospheric Research from October the 26th, 2023 through November 30th, 2024, that will allow NOAA contractors access to a selected area of the airport property to operate their weather station at George M. Bryan Field. Community development, we have consideration of the final plat 23-06, request for final plat approval, lot 3 and 4, Scraddling subdivision at 105 Raymond Street and 312 West Lampkin Street in a TN-E zoning district. Under engineering, we have consideration of approval of a Neil Schaefer, Inc. contract for the lump sum of $210,000 to provide engineering and planning services for the Safe Streets for All, S.S.C. for a City of Starkville and Mississippi State University Action Plan. Two is consideration of rejecting the sole bid for the 2023 roadway basin surfacing project and re-advertising. Three is consideration of approving to advertise for the McKee Park Pickleball Court Resurfacing Project. Under human resources, we have request authorization to hire Cameron Bell and Xavierous Gowdy as certified police officers, authorization to hire Stacy Cobens as a human resource generalist for the Human Resources and Utilities Department, request authorization to hire Demario Logan and Dylan Coleman as seasonal sanitation workers in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Four is request authorization to hire Kenny Belvin, David Bell, and Tessa Weeks as residential drivers in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Five is request authorization to hire Brandon Chalet, Malvin Daly, Felicia Ellison, James Smith, and Andrew Rogers as reserve Starkville police officers. Six is request authorization to hire Ethan McKee as an airport lineman, FBO with the Starkville Airport Department. Seven, consideration of the discipline recommended by Starkville Police Chief Mark Ballard as a result of disciplinary complaint for a Starkville police officer. Parks is consideration of approving an agreement with Architektronics for design and construction administration services for the proposed storage room wall in the Sportsplex Center. Two is consideration of the lowest quote by Websterant Store of $3,598 for two deep fryers for Cornerstone Park. Three is consideration for the sole source purchase of three sets Field Turf logos for Cornerstone Park in the amount of $28,392 from Field Turf, the same vendor used for the turf field installed. Four is consideration of the lowest quote from Keton Four, one vending ice machine in the amount of $9,858.8. Under the Utilities Department, we have number one, request authorization to approve the service agreement with Taylor Generators for generator servicing and maintenance in the amount of $11,163. Two is request authorization to approve the lowest quote from Central Pipe Supply, Inc. for materials needed on North Montgomery Street in the amount of $10,412.67. Three is request approval of the renewal of an as-needed general services contract from Atwell Dent to provide as-needed engineering services for utility services. Four is request approval for the mayor to execute the termination agreement with Talking Warrior Water Association to discontinue metering and billing services. Five, request authorization to approve the low quote from Stuart Irby for fire retardant uniforms for the electric division in the amount of $5,640.24. Six is request authorization to approve the low quote from Nesco for fire retardant uniform shirts for the electric division in the amount of $7,985.76. Seven is request approval of a master services agreement with Brisland to provide HVAC service and maintenance for the main office. Eight is request approval to advertise for bids for Phase 2 of the Fiber Loop project. And nine is request authorization to approve the low quote from Eagle Utilities and Vault Company for two meter vaults in the amount of $9,650. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, it is my question. All right. Next on the agenda, we have announcements and comments, and we have always fun for me as employee introductions, and I see folks all lined up in the back, so I'm guessing that that's who's going to be joining us up front here in just a few minutes. Chief, I see you too, so let's get started here. We have new employees with the fire department, and we have four of them, all with the fire department. So first, we have Cameron Deshun Hines. Mr. Hines, raise your hand. Which one are you going to be? All right, in the back there. Mr. Hines was born May 8th, 2000 in Starkville. He is an alumnus of Starkville High, class of 2018. While attending Starkville High, he was a member of the Starkville High Yellow Jackets Football Team, Honor Society, and National Vocational Technical Honor Society. Cameron earned a scholarship as a football player to Jackson State University and later transferred to East Mississippi Community College where he earned his associate degree and was recognized as a 2021-22 first-team academic honoree. Cameron is a member of the First Baptist Church of Longview, where he is a member of the Junior Layman and Longview 4-H disciplines. While serving as a member of the Junior Layman, Cameron visits local nursing homes and volunteers at Casserole Kitchen. He believes in serving the community, and we welcome you. Thank you so much for being with us. Next, we have William Gaskin. All right, Mr. Gaskin. He is from Mathiston, Mississippi, a 2019 graduate of East Webster High School. He earned his associate's degree from Holmes Community College in 2021, and he continued his education at Mississippi State University, graduating in May of 2023 with a degree in agricultural engineering, technology, and business concentrated in land surveying. William currently volunteers at three fire departments, BYWI. What fire department is it?
BYWI.
Yes. It's a place. I'm sorry. It was in all caps, so I thought it was an abbreviation. Somebody was...
Choctaw County, ma'am. ByWI. Choctaw County.
Choctaw County, there we go. Thank you. Thank you. Upora and Tom Nolan. While volunteering, William has obtained his Certified Volunteer One certification along with Apparatus Driver Operator Certification. When he's not working at Starkville Fire Department, he works for Cook Surveying and Mapping in Upora, and is a busy man with all that volunteering work. Well, congratulations and thank you for being with us. Next, we have Andrew Raffely. Mr. Raffely, there you are, okay. He was born and raised in Pontotock County and graduated from South Pontotock High in 2016. He attended Northeast Community College on a football scholarship where he was enrolled in the EMT program. He now lives in Ripley, Mississippi, with his wife Caitlin and their three children, Tucker, Avery, and Riverland. Andrew's father was a firefighter, and this influenced Andrew's decision to also become a firefighter. He initially joined the Beckham and Algoma Volunteer Fire Departments, and while he was attending school, he found a job at Northeast Mississippi Medical Center while working on the trauma hall as an ER tech, and he currently works there part-time, and we are delighted to have you. Welcome. And last but not least, Jamal Robey. Mr. Robey was born in Grenada, but has lived in Upora his whole life. Jamal graduated from Mississippi State University with a bachelor's degree in arts and sciences with an emphasis areas in business, psychology, and kinesiology. Jamal and his wife had three beautiful boys, ages nine, two, and one. Currently, Jamal is a three-year amateur boxer for HM Boxing stationed in Grenada. Interested, and is aspiring to become a professional boxer. All right. His hobbies include spending quality time with family, boxing, and giving back to his community. He trains kids as well as adults in his free time as a mentorship. Congratulations and welcome. Thank you all. We appreciate y'all taking time out to be with us this evening. All right. Any other comments? Let's see, I do need to say congratulations to Alderman Carver. It is always, it is always, it's hard to do when you're running for election and you prevailed in this next one, and the upcoming election will be November, so we wish you the very best.
And I say that to each and every person on this. Every person in their life needs to run for office or serve on a committee, and we've got several committees here in the state or in the city that if you see something that you're interested in, we could always use an extra hand, and appreciate those kind of words. And I would say the second thing, only really comment I've heard is how well it went this weekend. That's our first of eight home games this year. So hats off to the police and fire and utilities and sanitation workers and everything. And they had to turn around and follow that up with a holiday, so thank you to Mr. Smiley. I didn't see any other trash around at 5:00 today, but I think y'all did a wonderful job having to double up and come after a holiday, so thank you.
He called me at 3:45 or so, I believe it was, and told me that they had cleaned up the city. So when he said that, I had every faith that that had happened, so thank you. Alderman Rupp, anything?
Yeah, as long as we're talking about him. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Smiley as well. I am the city's representative on the Main Street Board, and we had some openings for some new board members, and his name came up repeatedly, in part because of the great reputation he and his department have in the city, and they thought it would be great to have him in on discussions of city events and how they work and get his input and his expertise that might make everything run smoothly. So he was unanimously welcomed to the Main Street Board, so congratulations, Chris. I think that's a reflection on your department and your character as well.
Absolutely, thank you. Alderman Brooks, anything?
Well, as long as we don't pile on Mr. Smiley. The bike rally went well, and I was riding my bike down the street, and I saw Mr. Smiley out taking pictures, and he had his personnel over there, and we had dumpsters over there. He's our part of the in-kind services, which is great for us to do because we do get a lot out of that, but they did a great job down there, so another accolade for Mr. Smiley and his department. Thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sistrunk?
I don't have anything nice to say about Mr. Smiley, other than he always, he always does a good job. But I do want to say, as Alderman Carver said, that we have commissions and committees that are opportunities to volunteer. Some are paid, but mostly they're volunteer opportunities where you can participate with government. One that's coming up that we approved earlier tonight to request applications was for the Election Commission. These are the people who run the elections, who actually run the elections, make sure the votes are tallied correctly, make sure that everything is documented properly, reconcile that sort of thing. Ms. Harden, what criteria do they have to meet in order to apply for that position?
Um, here's, I just know the website, but as long as they are not willing for office or have an immediate family, never run for office, and willing to study up on the laws, and there is some training practices that they have.
Okay. 18 registered voter.
Registered voter.
Registered voter, but a tremendously important, tremendously important role. And so if you know anyone who might be interested in serving the community in this way, do encourage them to make that application.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
May I be very brief? I want to join in on all the comments that have been made tonight, Mayor, and want to add on to the honorable budget share. Very important, a commission that we do need some very qualified candidates. And I only sought recognition to say this, Mayor, because these commissioners are going to be very essential in the event that the gentleman from one wins the general election on the first Tuesday in November, because by law, that election will be set by the board at our first meeting in January of 2024. And that election, if the gentleman from one wins, and certainly we'll be very confident by the gentleman, it'll be whatever the board decides by law, more than likely, it'll be that first or second Tuesday in February of 2024. But of course, that date will be set by the mayor and board. And I only say that because that's what the statute is going to put us at, but I only mention it honorable budget share because of your articulation of the qualifications and the need for some of the commissioners. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is citizen comments. This is the time when someone can come forward and mention anything they like to the board members. You have three minutes, it's timed by Ms. Harden, so we welcome all comments. Mr. Turner?
Greetings to the mayor, ma'am. My name is Albert Tunnel, Ward 7, to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief, to sanitation. Uh, citizens, want to thank the mayor and the police chief to help us pull off the NACP banquet. We thank you much. Uh, we have one problem that we have on Industrial Road with the new, uh, uh, shopping center. We have some people that come from 12 onto, uh, Industrial Park, and they try to turn in front of traffic. Uh, and we're afraid that someone will tee-bone someone, so that we'd like for you to look at that to see, uh, we had several people turn in front of cars to get to the, uh, new shopping center.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close the citizen comments. We did have a public appearance, but she canceled this morning by email, so we will roll into our public hearings. First item we have on the agenda under public hearings is our second public hearing in consideration of the tax mileage for the city of Starkville for the fiscal year 2023-2024. This is our second public hearing. We've had numerous work sessions, and we had our first public hearing last time, so anyone wishing at this point in time, we'll open it to the board here in a moment, but anyone wishing at this point in time to come give the board your thoughts on the tax mileage for the city of Starkville, either for or against. All right, seeing none, I'll close it as a public hearing. That moves us to consideration and any discussion that the board would like to have. Do we have, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I would make the motion that we set the mileage as outlined in the city clerk's resolution that she provided us at 32 mils for the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Okay, I have a motion for the tax mileage for a rate of 32 for the 2023-24 budget of the year. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Vaughn. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Beatty?
We're going to have an opportunity to discuss small changes to the budget itself after the, in the second part.
The next item will be the budget itself.
Is that the time to do it?
Yes, if you wish to. So, all right, no discussion for the mileage rate itself. Seeing none, if you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name. Alderman Carver?
Nay.
Alderman Rupp?
Yea.
Alderman Brooks?
Nay.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, that passes, so we have now set the tax mileage at 32, and going through the same process for the budget itself, we will have the second public hearing, consideration of adoption for the fiscal year 2023 budget for the city of Starkville. I'll open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to provide thoughts or concerns, either for or against, the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 for the city of Starkville. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and Alderman Beatty, would you like to share your thoughts?
Mayor, I'd like to see us amend the budget to go with the requested amount, that the library is requested of $290,000 in lieu of $275,000. It's just not a lot of money. I just, I was looking at some statistics a while ago, looking at sales tax. We're projecting or we're plugging into our budget, and this is, it's not an exact science, but we're plugging in $9,100,000 for sales tax for FY24. If we go, and that's a little under 2%, if we go to, from last year to this year, it was a 2% increase, which covered, roughly covered inflation. If we do a 2% inflation this year, that puts us at $9,160,000. I guess what I'm saying is, there's probably going to be enough to cover the library's request, $15,000 request. That is, that goes for the PERS increase for their personnel. I think it's very important for them. I got some statistical stuff from them, requested it from Mr. Carter, but I mean, after, out of 52 public libraries, and we're not the only one, the county funds a library too, but we're 43rd out of 52 library systems in the state in funding per capita, so we can do a little bit better on that. This would be a good, kind of a good faith effort, a good show of good faith to them to be able, for us to increase that where they can cover their PERS costs, and I would recommend that we do that.
Okay. Is that a form of a motion?
When it comes time to approve the budget, it could just be added to that.
Okay, you want to, but when you make that motion, you want to amend it, using that amendment?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Alderman Sistrunk?
And as part of that, because that was my note, to see if we can do that, and what I was going to suggest was for purposes of adopting the budget, that we reclassify $15,000 from the capital budget that we have for the library over to operations. So that will get it up to 290 for operations, and it won't change the bottom line.
Will we still have our $20,000 for their air conditioning?
We'll have five, and if the air conditioner doesn't survive, we'll figure it out.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, I mean, we covered, we covered some overages in our budget last year, and the budget was tight, but we were able to cover some overages that, and in the year, I mean, I assume we end the year with a $2.75 million budget surplus because we're starting the year with that. And so we're increasing our cash surplus, which is good. We need to be at 10, close to 10%. And then with $27.5 million budget, $2.75 million is 10%. So that's kind of the healthy range for bonding and that kind of thing. But we were able to increase our fund balance, we were able to cover some overages in different departments, and I think we'll be able to do that air conditioning for the library and cover their cost and not look back. And I think that, I was looking at last, the July sales tax for this year versus last, you know, this just, the sales tax figure we just got, which was $736,000, $691,000 last year, that's $45,000 increase, which is 6.5% increase. Now, we won't be up 6.5% every month, but I think it's easy, would be reasonable to expect us to increase from 2% to 3% on our, I mean...
Alderman Sistrunk?
And I think what I'm trying to do is make sure we leave here with a balanced budget. So the amendment would either be to reclassify from capital to operations or increase the operations expense and increase the sales tax projections.
I would say increase that sales tax by $50,000 to $9,150,000.
Why don't you make that in the form of a motion, and we'll go second, and then we'll see where we are.
Okay, I would recommend that we, that on the revenue side of our projected FY24 general fund budget, that we show as the projected or the anticipated revenue on the revenue side from, intergovernmental revenue from sales tax, that we amend it from $9,100,000 to $9,150,000, and that we are, as part of that additional $50,000 that we fully fund the Starkville Library additional $15,000 request and keep their $20,000 capital improvements request in the budget also.
Okay, I have a motion. Alderman Sistrunk, that's a second.
Second.
All right, I have a second from Alderman Sistrunk. Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Alderman Rupp?
I had talked about this with Alderman Sistrunk, and I was on board with the moving the H-back money over, and I'm more comfortable with doing it that way, and then if there is an issue, we can address it versus doing both. So I prefer Alderman Sistrunk's original solution to this. I think that was more prudent. That's my opinion.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other thoughts?
And the truth of the matter is, if the, if the air conditioner collapses, $20,000 is not going to cover it. We're going to have to come up with more money than that, and so that's why I was more than happy to make that reclass from capital to operations. But it is, it is six of one, half dozen of the other, so.
Yes, Mayor, Alderman Sistrunk, it did collapse, and we did have to spend $40,000, and, ma'am, would we be prepared to spend the money necessary to repair or replace the air conditioning?
It's our, it's our building and our responsibility to take care of it.
Okay, I'm fine.
Okay, so I do have a motion, unless you're wishing to...
If the motion's not going, if the resolution's not going to carry with the $20,000, with both?
We won't know until we vote.
We won't know with both, I guess.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? Everybody clear on what the motion is? Okay, all right, if you would, please answer yea or nay as a...
I do.
I do? Answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name. Starting now with Alderman Vaughn.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Nay.
Alderman Brooks.
Nay.
Alderman Rupp.
Nay.
Alderman Carver.
Nay.
All right. Motion carries. We have, we now have tax mileage and we, mileage rate, and we have a budget with the adjustment. And Ms. Harden, you got those adjustments, right? All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, next we have public hearing, consideration to determine where the structure is located at North Long Street with the parcel number is amended to public health, safety, and And Office, Code Enforcement Officer Nash.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. My name is Alexandra Nash. I'm a officer and code enforcement officer at Starkville Police Department. I will be presenting two dilapidated properties today. The first is gonna be at Long Street. All right. And this is gonna be an overview of the property. The parcel ID is gonna be 118O as in Ocean dash 00 dash 087 dot 00. This is gonna be the property link information, and you're gonna be able to see it at the upper, let's see if I remember how to use this, right here. Upper left corner where it says owner, it's gonna have, uh, Elmore Cooper, and then the state is gonna be to Beverly Gaspar, who I believe is gonna be here today. So, this is gonna be a photo of the first notice of violation, and it was gonna be issued to the property owner on Thursday, July 12th, 2023. All right. These are gonna be photographs that were taken by myself below of the first initial inspection, which was gonna be performed by me, and it was completed on Monday, July 10th, 2023. So, this is gonna be where some growth is. Over here, you can see some rubbish as well as some debris. There's gonna be different things. You can see there's some wood on the ground. Right here, if you notice, this is gonna be a measuring tape at the top right here. I know it's hard to see. It's gonna be 47 inches, so it's gonna be approximately three feet and 11 inches. Over here, this is still gonna be from the same day. You can see the overgrowth right here, and you can see various different kinds of mechanical equipment in here as well. Again, this is gonna be a different, full of debris and different kind of rubbish and different kind of materials. All right. This is gonna be a public hearing notice, which was placed at City Hall. It is still gonna be downstairs in the window. It was also sent to the property and mailed by certified mail to the property owner on Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. This is gonna be where it was posted. It was posted on, I believe it's gonna be a, a tree right here, which is gonna be on the property. You can see the rubbish and debris in the background. This is where it was posted, here at City Hall. All right. These photographs were taken on August 28th, 2023, and you can see it has been cut, so we no longer have any kind of overgrowth. However, we still do have some tires that are here. There's a mop bucket, another bucket. You can see that there's still gonna be debris and different kind of materials in the background. These are gonna be up closer of that debris and rubbish that's still gonna be there. Looks like a little bit of overgrowth between, same thing again, code enforcement truck's gonna be in the background. There are some bikes here, just different kinds of metals. Still different kinds of material. And then that's gonna be it. And I believe Ms. Beverly is gonna be here.
This is a public hearing, so I will open it as a public hearing. Is the property owner with us? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come up?
Yes.
And is that property, do you confirm that that's the property and that's the state it's in?
It was in.
Okay.
No longer in that state now.
Okay. You've cleaned it up?
Yes. I do have photos. I didn't get a chance to, um-
Okay.
I also took some updated photographs as well.
Okay. So, he is now in, in a clean, clean state?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, we appreciate that and thank you for, for responding to that. And hopefully it will stay cleaned up, right?
I hope so.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Well, I do still need to have public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter now would be the time. Anyone wishing to speak to this? All right. Thank you. I will close it as a public hearing. Does the board wish to take action if she has cleaned it up, or do we wish to, uh, hold it in abeyance for several months? Alderman Vaughn, this is in your ward.
We, we, we take what it were as she can plan.
Okay.
Well, I'll have pictures if you need them.
I also have-
I, I pass, I see it. Thank you so much, Ms. Beverly.
All right. So, uh, board wishes to take no action at this point in time? Anyone wish, okay?
No, ma'am.
All right.
Make a motion that no, uh, the board will take no action at this time.
All right. We'll, we will take no action at this time. Thank you very much, and, and we know how to find you if we need to clean it again, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Mayor, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Of Mr. Smiley. It's Mr. Smiley's day today. Though, I saw that earlier picture with those tires out on the street. Now, is, are tires something that you can pick up, or is that a different type of rubbish that has to go treated differently? I know it's, I know there's a fee on tires and that sort of stuff.
Let's let him come up to the microphone so he can be heard.
When you're on spot today, ma'am.
Tires are something that we cannot pick up. We pick up some on case-by-case basis, but it's not something that we regularly can pick up, 'cause there's no way to dispose of them.
That's kind of what I thought.
Do we have a number that we pick up, or do we just not pick them up at all?
It's normal for residential. We pick up one or two.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Next item is a public hearing, consideration of the structure at North Long Street. Again, this one has actually been cleaned up, am I correct?
That is correct. I actually do not have a presentation for that because it has already been cleaned up.
All right. That's fine, but we did advertise it as public hearing, so I'm going to have a public hearing, and then we will, we will move on to the next item. So, let me open it as a public hearing. This is located in North Long Street, parcel number 118O dash 00 dash 031, um, 211911 for being amended to public health, safety, and welfare. Anyone wishing to speak to this item? All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And again, someone has cleaned it up, which is wonderful, so we will move to the next item.
All right. Next, I have another dilapidated structure. It's gonna be 301 Everglade Avenue. This is gonna be an overview of the property. The parcel ID is gonna be 118J as in John dash 00 dash 0072 dot 00. So, here's gonna be the property information. The upper left corner, it's gonna belong to an Ethel Brooks. Next, these photographs were taken by myself at the first initial inspection, which was completed on Monday, July 10th, 2023. As you can see in these photographs, there's gonna be a lot of overgrowth here on the house, as well as the side street of the property. This is gonna be the back of the property. The rubbish that you're gonna see here and debris with this lamp is gonna be located on the front porch. This right here is gonna be a lovely box, which is actually filled with maggots. Right here is gonna be a, a little shelter of some short. It looks like it was a doghouse. There's gonna be some fencing and wiring that's entangled in here. You can see that there's a tarp. So, this is gonna be the first notice of violation, which was sent to the property owner on Thursday, July 12th, 2023. These photographs were taken Saturday, July 22, 2023. As you can see, this is gonna be the very front of the house. There's gonna be a broken window and there's glass, which is inside as well as outside of the property. Right here is gonna be where these maggots were. They have now turned into critters and mugs. Um, it's gonna be that tall grass again from the side of the property, as well as the back. Right here is gonna be the notice of violation, uh, that was sent, as well as posted on the property, as well as here on City Hall, and it's still gonna be downstairs in the window today. So, this is gonna be where it was posted on the front door, where it's gonna be posted at City Hall, which was posted Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. All right. These photographs were gonna be taken on August 28th, 2023. This is gonna be the west side of the house, which you can see the overgrown of the grass here, broken mailbox. East side, which is the backside of the property, still gonna be that overgrown grass. There's been no attempts of any sort. This is still gonna be some, where the maggots were, that have turned into bugs with rotten meat and rubbish and debris. Again, it's gonna be the same exact rubbish that was there. And this is, I put Starkville Community Garden. So, right here is gonna be a garden, which is right next to the property, and it actually looks fantastic and great. It's gonna be called the Youth and Children's Garden. It's actually called the Garden of Love. Um, so, it's been sponsored by the United Methodist Church Laundry Love and the Habit of Habitat for Humanity, which is this house that's right next door with this overgrowth is right next to it, which people do visit frequently.
Okay. Have we heard from the owner at all?
No, ma'am.
We've had no response from the owner. And is that owner, uh, in town, or is that owner an out of town?
The owner is gonna be out of town in Tennessee.
And the house is empty? It's vacant?
Correct. We had officers go in to verify that because there was a open door, and for safety reasons, we made sure.
Okay. All right. Any questions of, uh, yes, Alderman?
Mayor, this board, this, uh, Mayor and the board, this, this particular property been before us three times every year. This property coming for us. What suggestion do you have, we have, uh, come up with to eliminate this, because it's the third year this property been for us?
Well, we've never, we've never taken it up to make it a 211911 that I'm aware of, to tear it down, which is what we're talking about now. So, um, I'll open it as a public hearing, and we'll, we'll see, but that's, that would be the thing, is we were, we would be taking it to the point where we would then demolish it like we have other buildings in the past. So, any, let me, let me open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter about this particular property located at 301 Everglade? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. So, um, much like the ones we've done on Curtis Circle, and we did on McKinley, um, we did on Fellowship, so any of these would, would, it would fall under that heading if the board so decides. Do you wish to make a motion to that effect? Do we wish to have a finding that it is, um, amended to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community?
Yeah, let's do that one.
Sir?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right. Is that a motion, Mr. Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Rupp? Okay. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
What will the next step be?
Um, well, we will, we will notify them that we are looking to demolish it.
They're gonna get a free, you know?
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, Mr. Havlin, you are up next, I believe, with a variance.
Yes, this is VA 2309. This is the request by Thomas Stewart on behalf of Starkville Consolidated School District for a variance for stormwater requirements on campus of Starkville High School located at 603 Yellow Jacket Drive. And where this is coming from, you can see the star on the map on the right. This is the proper location of where they're proposing to build a softball classroom facility, and it's directly south of the football field and east of the existing softball field. The applicant is currently designing this new classroom locker room for the high school softball team. The proposed structure is about 2,400 square feet. Since the structure is over 1,000, it required site plan review and architecture review. During the site plan review, it was determined that stormwater detention would be required. Um, the applicant has stated, which some of staff has kind of agreed with, is that the amount of impervious coverage is being added to the site compared to the overall size of the site is very minimal. So, the request is to not do storm, stormwater requirements for this additional 2,400 square feet. And this was notified to 44 property owners, uh, directly by mail. A legal ad was published on August 6th, and a sign was placed on the property. As of this date, the planning office has received no response from the notifications. As all, with all variances, there are six criteria for variance review and approval, and then with stormwater, there's an additional two criteria. If there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Havlin?
What did, what did the vote on voting just appear? What they have voted for?
Oh, I'm sorry. They, they voted unanimously to recommend approval. Apologies.
I think I saw. Yes. Anything, anything you wish to add to Mr. Havlin's presentation?
No. You may have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions? All right. If not, then I'll, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Beatty.
Let me, um, so this has no stormwater mitigation of any type. I mean, are, are y'all paying to park a lot around this building, or what?
No. Um, this building, it will sit behind the dugout, um, on currently grass area. We do plan to do some stormwater around the building just for drainage, but, um, not a retained structure.
No parking, no paved parking lots, so it will make water get off of it quickly and like that. Okay.
Okay. All right. Let me open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to it now would be the time, either for or against. All right. I'll close it as a public hearing.
Move approval.
Alderman Vaughn, is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver? All right. No further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Sistrunk.
I'd like to, to just say that I share Alderman Beatty's concerns about ignoring storm, stormwater requirements. This is a little different in that it is a large, open field where there will be lots of opportunity for the water to be absorbed prior to impacting someone else. It's also an area that is unlikely to be developed other than for school purposes over, over the future. And as I appreciate it, the, the mitigation technique would have been to pipe and cover some sort of underground things. And as we've seen all too often, that when you start getting into a piping and covering situation, it works in the short term, but long term, there, there are other problems.
May I make a comment?
Alderman Beatty.
I just wanted the board, because the policy thing, we're starting to count developments, is, is, is understand the policy that we set of granting exceptions to our stormwater mitigation that we have now and the cumulative effect that that could have. And it won't, this twenty-four hundred square foot building sitting in a pasture is not going to affect anything. But a lot of, a lot of these developments in South Starkville that we, that we, that a developer asked for and we can, has granted an exception for stormwater mitigation will in time and they, you won't get, when you send out notices for who would oppose it, you're not going to get opposition in August. You can get opposition two years later, the next spring, when you get a five-inch rain or something like that. And it won't happen because one project was done and we granted exception on one project. It's when, it's when we do it to, continues to, to projects all over an area. And then something happens and there's a, the water floods an area and then at that point in time, it's too late for us to go back. So I guess as we move forward, just that we'd be careful as a board to, to understand that, that these things can add up and the cumulative effect of it is we could have some water problems in the future. So this one's fine. I'm, I'm with this.
Alderman Brooks, I saw you're here.
Yeah, just for, for point of education for all of us, because I know you've worked so hard on reworking the UDC. Educate us real quick again on what triggered the site plan review, the thousand square feet trigger.
Yes, it was the thousand square feet was the trigger on, on this one. There's either two triggers, either value of the buildings versus the construction cost or thousand square feet. So this was a thousand square feet.
That triggered the site plan review.
Correct.
And I, I do believe, Alderman Beatty, I saw some pictures of rains over weekends and some warehouses that were downtown that flooded. So I mean, it's, you know, stormwater's not a problem. Who it is and when it is is, is too late.
And I will say this about our city engineer. He's really talented when it comes to stormwater, like understanding the calculations and the impact of, of the regulations with the calculations. And he really expressed a major concern with this.
Yeah, so this difference sounds fine. But I think you guys are doing a good job because certainly something we have to be vigilant about.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Mayor Russell.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? If not, we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Mr. Havlin, the request for a variance sidewalk.
This is VA twenty-three dash eleven. This is a sidewalk variance for the surgeon clinic. This request is by the physicians and surgeons clinic for a variance from sidewalk requirements at one hundred Brandon Road. Sorry. It is located on the southeast corner of Brandon Road and forgive me, I missed the other name of the street. The applicant has gone through some remodels. It's a condoed out building, so his section of the building, he has gone through some remodels, a total of three hundred thousand. The previous tenants or other people in the condo have done some remodels. And so that's where they've come to trigger this requirement is from spending more than fifty thousand dollars on the project.
Is it fifty percent or fifty thousand?
There's, that's the trigger through building permit. There's a trigger through site plan review and then one through building permit. He never triggered a full site plan review, but he did trigger the sidewalks because of the price of building permit. So they were kind of aware at the beginning and were working through it during the project. And ultimately they chose that the best option for them was to seek a variance due to some of the constraints on the site. There's a ditch that runs on the southern end of the site and then the parking is actually kind of out into the right away and there's very limited room on that side. So he is requesting to pay the fee in lieu for constructing the required sidewalk along Brandon Road and Carver Drive. So Carver Drive is the road through the south. This request was notified in accordance with the UDC. Non-property owners received notification directed by mail. Legal ad was on August eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Starkville Daily News signed posted on the property. As of this date, we have received no response to the notifications. Again, with all variances, there's the six criteria. And then with the sidewalk, there's some additional criteria. And then here is where it spells out the fee in lieu. And then the actual square footage is spelled out in the staff report for what that would be. Board of Adjustment Appeals reviewed this last week and voted unanimously recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Havlin?
What is the fee in lieu?
Alderman Beatty.
What is the, what would be the fee in lieu?
That would be more of a city engineer question. He knows what the actual M dot amount is. But the, the square footage is in the staff report. So he would use that number times whatever the current, current amount is, yes.
Anything else? All right, is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come up? Anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Havlin has presented?
Yes, my hand. So I'm, I'm Dr. Livingston. I'm one of the partners of the physicians and surgeons group. I actually work full-time at, at that location. So our, I guess our main request is just the way it's positioned. It's, you know, talking to our construction company, it's going to be a big hardship. So along the Brandon roadside here, there's a lot of flower beds and planters and green space that they've kind of had there. Like, and so there's going to be a lot of demolition to actually be able to even have space for a sidewalk. And then as Mr. Havlin said, there's a, a big ditch with a drop-off there. Actually, our parking lot's kind of built on a retaining wall there. They actually quoted us, if we had to do sidewalk somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just with the dirt work and having to actually move drainage on the ditch side down there. We're actually under budget on our project. So it was, it actually wound up costing more than half of what we're spending on the remodel to move into Dr. Anthony's old side there. And the tenants above us that are the dentists, they would actually lose some parking because their parking goes all the way to the edge there. So that's our, our big concern. And just with it being a condo, we don't own the entire lot. We just own like our half of the, the bottom of the building. The fee in lieu, I think what we had roughly been quoted is somewhere between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars based off M dot rates and the square footage of sidewalk on, on the two areas.
Thank you. Any questions, Dr. Livingston? Okay, let me open it as a public hearing. I will do that now. Anyone wishing to speak about this matter is fee in lieu for sidewalk on Carver and Brandon. Now would be the time. Anyone, either for or against? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, one last item? Before we get to the comments. Yes, I'm sorry, one last public hearing, one last public hearing item.
This is VA twenty-three dash ten. This is a request by Jeff Hosford for a variance from the setback requirements located at two oh four South Washington. The applicant is seeking approval to build within the side setbacks of the property. There was a previous structure that was on the site that was destroyed by fire June of two thousand twenty-two. The applicant is proposing to build a new structure at the same footprint as the previous structure. The previous structure was classified as a non-conforming structure due to not meeting the current setback requirements. A site plan was submitted in May ninth, two thousand twenty-three. The proposed structure is shown within the side setback and within ten feet of the building to the south, that's in this area. Another site plan was submitted in June, on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. On the new site plan, the property line dimensions had changed as well as the location of adjacent structures. This is kind of a composite. I've overlaid the May ninth with the June sixteenth. The May ninth is in red, the June sixteenth is in green. You kind of see how some of the structures had shifted and the property line had actually moved and some of the dimensions had changed. So after comparing the two site plans and reviewing the boundary description and the warranty deed, it became apparent that determining if the setbacks were, requirements are being met was not feasible, not possible with the submitted site plans. The applicant's request is to build it back within this, build back to proposed structure in the same location as the previous structure that was destroyed by fire on June two thousand twenty-two. The request was noticed in accordance with UDC. Eleven property owners of record received a letter by mail. A legal ad was published on August sixth and a sign posted on the property. As of this date, we have received no response to the notification. Again, here's the six criteria for variance review and approval. On August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, the Board of Adjustment Appeals meeting, after not being able to determine the amount of space needed for the specific variance, the board unanimously recommended to approve the request with one condition. The variance from the side setback up to two foot six inches as verified, verified by survey. So basically, they're saying if they can, if the applicant can locate the property line in relation to the building, if, if the variance needed is at two foot six inches or less, then they're recommending approval.
That was their, that was their recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And now I see the applicant is in the, is in the audience. So would you like to come and?
Good evening.
Add any additional information?
Yeah, if I may, have a moment.
Turn the lights back.
May I approach?
Mayor, before we get started, I have a question.
Certainly.
Mr. Havlin, are these documents here are the documents that have already been submitted to our advisory commission, the Board of Adjustment Appeals? They looking at these documents?
It's something out, but I, I did not know. They appear to be similar to what was passed out. It was, I, I never got a copy. With the exception of the front page, which is a survey.
And Mr. Havlin, my final question right now is, and I think, matter of fact, not think, but you also mentioned this at the work session on Friday, that this recommendation for setback from the requirement to be two, two and a half feet is verified by a survey. And the Board of Adjustments and Appeals unanimously recommended that.
Yes, sir.
And that commission is chaired by a former city engineer, Donald H.W. Ward Jr.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Nick, is he still sits on the commission?
Yes.
Former Holland for what? Five to serve two terms from May three to two thousand and one. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, Mr. Hosford.
Um, what you have in front of you, obviously, I, I gave this to the last board with the exception of the thing on the front, which is a survey, which is what they requested in order to approve it. I also presented you pictures to the previous board. I had a copy of pictures for everybody at the previous board, but I did not pick those back up. So there's only one. They'll pass them down, I'm sure. There is actually twelve feet between my house and the house next to it, which I both own both houses on each side. And as you can tell in those pictures, I measured that. So it's not correct. What happened was the guy that drew my plans did not place the house in the right position when he submitted it the first time. Upon realizing that, I resubmitted the plans and had him correct that. Obviously, we now have the survey on the south line, which is what the Board of Adjustments requested we do in order to approve it. All I'm asking to do is rebuild a house that was burnt by a fire in the exact same footprint of the house that's currently there. Obviously, my goal here is to improve the neighborhood. I, I own several houses in the area and I live next to this house. The plans are in the plans. I think it's a very nice house. It will definitely improve the property value of my house and the surrounding houses and the city. I, all I'm asking is for an adjustment to be allowed to rebuild the house that was destroyed by a fire through no fault of my own. I'm sure each of you, if you had a fire on your house, would want to be able to rebuild it also, and that's all I'm asking.
Okay, so, Mr. Havlin, you want, since you didn't get it, you want to have a?
No, I just looked at the document.
Okay, all right, sure. Any questions, Mr. Hosford, before I open it as a public hearing?
Just a question.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yes, sir.
Two point, for the daisies, for the, to see, set back.
The two point six foot, we're actually past that. If you look at the survey that's there. Yes, I'm fine with that. I own the house directly to the south of it. That's my personal residence. And the house I bought, which is, I owned it when it caught on fire, I own that house too. And the footprint that we're using is the exact same footprint of the house that sits there, which was built approximately nineteen twenty. So nothing is changing in the neighborhood as far as the footprint of the home. The only thing that's going to change is the, the outward appearance, which is now a destroyed property. And, and I would think my neighbors would agree if they want it rebuilt. The only other option I may have would be to either destroy it completely, which I really don't want to do, or I don't know what from that point. But, but I think I should be able to, as a citizen, rebuild my home in the exact same footprint of someone that sits there.
Alderman Sistrunk.
May I ask Mr. Havlin a question?
Sure.
Does this comply with the recommendation of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
It's because I'm a member of the survey. I'm not an expert as far as what survey law says. I would imagine it would need a stamp. I recognize the name on there, it's Thomas Allen, but I don't see a stamp. If the board is comfortable with this being part of the survey, I'm comfortable. He is a licensed engineer. He sent me that by email. There was a short, short notice. And obviously, I can get it stamped if that's a requirement, but I don't, don't have that.
Just for record purposes, just to do that. Anyone else before I open it as a public hearing? Alderman Brooks?
Well, you want to put it back in the same spot?
Yes, sir.
But if I understand, it was classified as illegal non-conforming use because it did meet the setbacks in the same part.
No, sir. The house was built in nineteen twenty. The house has been there for over a hundred years at this point. It burnt down. So there is no non-conforming use when it was built. The, the setbacks and all of that changed through the years. So obviously, at this point, it became that. But, but there was no actual record of that.
It doesn't meet the current use as illegal non-conforming use, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
But if it doesn't meet the current requirements, it is illegal non-conforming use.
I don't know the city law, but I prefer Mr. Burke.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's accurate. What he, what he's saying is it's illegal non-conforming use because of the standard or the specifics as they are now, it did not meet those. I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, that's right. And that's what I was trying to get to. It was classified as illegal non-conforming use, but I, I don't really understand if, if this, if you're using the same setbacks, then it would still fall under that, which we can allow that because it's got to go back to the, to the, it's got to be, it's got to meet the current requirements. So is, am I understanding that, Mr. Havlin, correct?
Just to clarify that, if that survey is acceptable, then I can use it.
Just so everybody can hear, please.
If that survey is considered to be acceptable and I can use it and it doesn't require a setback, then it wouldn't be non-conforming from that.
Because it's over five feet. I'm seeing five.
When we made the determination as illegal non-conforming, we didn't have enough information to determine one way or the other.
All right, so that, that's why it was. That's what I was trying to get to.
Correct.
So, so if this is five point one feet, that's over the five feet requirement.
Correct. That would, that would meet it.
That would meet. So, so if.
Make it legal.
Yeah, make it legal. If, if this satisfies the board, then it's certain. That's what I was trying to get to.
All right. Alderman Hosford.
Not, not to confuse anyone here, but I would like to leave with at least a final determination so I don't have to come back.
We're not, we're not. I, I still need to open it as a public hearing. We'll come back to discussion, so.
Yeah. And to answer your question, my goal is to rebuild it and make it better. Obviously, I, I think everybody wants that.
Will this be your private residence or will this be your law office?
It will be a rental. It'll be a duplex. Three bedrooms, four bath duplex on each side, with a garage.
Anything else before I open it as a public hearing? Okay, let me open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this particular matter, which is a request for a variance from setback requirements on South Washington Street, now would be the time, either for or against. Seeing none, I'll close it as a public hearing. Any further discussion? So you, you can get this stamped, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, it should be.
All right, and that would verify that puts it in a legal conforming.
Just so everybody's aware, the house that was there was a duplex. So, so that's not changing at all. I don't know if that was clear from board.
Okay. Anyone? Alderman Sistrunk?
Can I make the motion that we approve this request on receipt of a stamped survey?
Okay, all right. Alderman Vaughn, did you?
That was the same thing I see, but second.
So the second, okay. So I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk that this is approved with a stamped survey. Correct, okay. And I have a second from Alderman Vaughn. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. All right, Mr. Hosford, do you have an answer?
Thank you.
Yes.
I assume I get the city about the permit?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Hosford, I think you got the photo somewhere. I can get it back. It's written.
Okay, last but not least, is the claim stock it as we need to pay our bills. So I have a motion from Alderman Carver. I have a second from Alderman Rupp. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, if you will indulge me and let me read my calling for the work session. In accordance with the notice that's required under the Mississippi Code annotated twenty-five forty-one thirteen, the board will have a work session on Friday the fifteenth of September, two thousand twenty-three at eleven AM. Meeting will be held at City Hall, second floor conference room located at one-ten West Main. Notice should be provided at this work session within one hour of this meeting by posting such notice at City Hall. Noticement of work session should be made as part of the minutes of the board meeting. This work session will be an open public meeting of the city of Starkville and the public and press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to recess?
Move approval.
I have a motion to recess from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are in recess. Thank you, everyone.